Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this, the regular Wednesday, July the 2nd, 2025, NAGC's Head Board of Commissioners meeting. We are hereby called to order. Would ask if you will please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all from.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to a recognition this morning, and I'll ask Chief Wells to come up to the podium, please.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, we proudly recognize and honor Fire Engineer Anthony Dillon for his 15 years of dedicated service with the town of NAGC's Head Fire and Rescue Division. Anthony began his career with us on June 10th, 2010, and over the years, he has earned the respect of his peers and community through his professionalism, integrity, and unwavering commitment to public service. Throughout his career, Anthony has steadily risen through the ranks, consistently going above and beyond his role. One of his most notable contributions is his leadership in development and the implementation of Storm Truck 16, the department's high-water vehicle. Thanks to his efforts, this critical resource now plays a key role in storm response and flood emergencies, significantly enhancing our department's ability to protect lives and property during severe weather events. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Anthony is a dedicated husband and father. He lives in Mania with his wife Ashley and daughter Paige. And deeply values his time with his family, especially exploring the outdoors in the Alligator River area with his four-wheel-drive vehicle. Each holiday season, Anthony brings his joy to the community by creating an impressive light display at his home, a tradition which reflects both his creativity and generosity. And I encourage you, if you have not seen it, you need to spend some time over there watching that display. Chevy Chase is amazing, by the way. Anthony's commitment to service extends beyond NAGC. He is a proud member of the Roanoke Island Volunteer Fire Department, where he continues to share his knowledge and experience and support the greater community. Please join us in expressing our sincere gratitude to Fire Engineer Dillon for his 15 years of courage, compassion, and his unwavering commitment to both his profession and the people he serves. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really do appreciate you. Thank you. That brings us next to public comment, and Mr. Leidy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide comment on matters of interest or concern. Anybody who wishes to provide comment can do so by going to the podium, starting by telling us your name and where you live, and then addressing your remarks to the Board as a whole. The Board rarely responds to comment, and it's not an opportunity for dialogue. Also, if you're here to speak on one of the public hearings, you can reserve your comments until we actually get to that particular public hearing. But for anyone else who wants to speak for public comment, this is your opportunity. Anybody? Yes, sir. And I will also let you know when your time is just about up.
Hello, my name is Chris Sawen. I'm the CEO of the Outer Banks Community Foundation, and it's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you, Mayor Kahoon, Commissioners, NAGC's Head staff. I'm here to talk about a new initiative that the Outer Banks Community Foundation has undertaken. It is regarding disaster recovery. We have been involved as a fundraiser and a grant maker in disaster recovery for most of our four decades of existence at the Outer Banks Community Foundation. We are one of the leading permanent resources for philanthropy in our area, and we address all sorts of community challenges through grants and scholarships. One of the grant programs we have is our disaster recovery program, and our high-water mark really was Hurricane Dorian, where our board and staff rose to the occasion and helped countless people in Ocracoke and Hatteras Island through an amazing set of partners such as Interfaith Community Outreach, Cape Hatteras United Methodist Men, the Ocracoke Island, Ocracoke Interfaith Relief and Recovery Team, Red Cross Baptist Men. It was a wonderful outpouring of support from a number of organizations, and we had a very distinct and specific role. We are fundraisers, and we are grant makers. We bring in dollars from the outside world, from local businesses, and we distribute those funds as quickly as we can to people in need. There's no friction, no fees. All of our services, all of our staff time is donated to those efforts. And I'm knocking on wood that we don't get a storm in 2025. But last year, we asked ourselves a question. This is not something we're really known for. Do we want to have a public outreach to let folks know what we do? So we got together a focus group, some very talented people, I believe, and one of them was NAGC's Head Police Officer Dee Johnson, who joined us for a number of meetings. And what we came up with was a new program, and it's called the Trusted Partners Program. I'm bringing a rack card, and I brought a stack to maybe give to Andy to put in Town Hall. But the purpose of the program is community outreach and buy-in during blue skies. The day after Dorian, our board of directors, volunteers, staff started dialing every business they could. Right off the bat, $150,000 anchor gift from Town Bank set the ball in motion, and over the course of only about six weeks, we raised $1.5 million that was distributed to people who needed repairs to their homes, temporary housing, new appliances, and the list goes on and on. So, we asked ourselves, if we reached 500 people on that first day, what would it be like if we already had the first 500 people identified? And that's the crux of this program. We have a webpage, we have these marketing materials, made a video, and I'm going out and reaching out to businesses and elected officials such as yourselves to let folks know that we want you to pay attention and answer one simple question. The next time there's a disaster, can we call you? It's that simple. We're not asking for funding. We want to know, will you share with us your email address so that if we have another big disaster, that we already have those first 500, maybe it's 1,000 people lined up saying, yes, call me. If we do call you, we're going to communicate three things. The first is, we're going to let you know how your neighbors in need can get assistance through some of our grants programs. The second thing is, yes, we're going to ask you for money. You don't have to, but it's what we do, and we're going to give you an opportunity, give you a link. But the third thing is what I thought our focus group was brilliant in doing. Every one of us has friends on social media across the country, maybe even across the globe. I've got friends in just about every state. And so the third thing we're going to ask you to do is, we want you to share vetted messaging about the need in our area through your social media. If you do that, and your neighbors do that, and your friends on social media see that, we're going to amplify the amount of support that we get. So really, it's almost like one of those PTA phone trees. You know, if you sign up, we'll let you know the important messaging, you let your friends know, put it on social media. These social media sites run on algorithms, so if there's more activity, it's going to get into more feeds. So, that's the purpose of it. If anybody is interested, and I hope you are, go to obcf.org/trusted and answer that one question. The next time a storm hits, can we call you? That's pretty much the crux of it, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to address all of you today.
Thank you, Chris. Would anyone else like to address the board? Anyone else? If not, we will conclude the public comment session at this time.
All right. Thank you, Chris, to you and your board and your supporters. We appreciate that program very much. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you. That brings us to public hearings. But John, I want to ask first, we do have to have a public hearing on the financing here?
Yes, sir.
Can we do the rest of this? Can we get the report on the bids and do the rest of this, and then do our two public hearings together?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and I'll call on David to come up and begin his report.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So, before you is the new Employee Wellness Center and workforce housing above. This was recently reviewed at one of your recent meetings for site plan approval, and the project is comprised of a 3,200-square-foot new wellness center with two four-bedroom workforce housing units above, parking lot improvements, walkways, as well as associated infrastructure improvements to include a redeveloped onsite wastewater system. This project was recently advertised for bid. There was, the way that the bid was structured, was a base bid and three alternates. The alternates were G1, which was a second-floor build-out, G2, which was a gravel parking lot and fence, and G3, which was a complete sprinkler system and spray foam within the attic. So, this project was recently advertised. This was bid under the formal bid guidelines. On the first bid advertisement, we only received two bids, and as a result of the lack of three competitive bids being received, we had to go through a second bid, and on that second read advertisement, we were able to receive three bids. Those three bids that we received were from AR Chesson with a total bid amount of $2,355,219 from Sussex Development, and that amount was $2,397,113. And then lastly, from Todd Coil Construction, and that amount was $4,170,320. So, based upon the bids that were submitted, AR Chesson was the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So, the recommendation is to accept the construction bid submitted by AR Chesson for the base bid amount, as well as additive alternate G1, the second-floor build-out, and additive alternate G3, the complete sprinkler system and spray foam attic, for a total bid amount of $2,338,000. Amy's going to go ahead and speak about the financing here afterwards. So, the specific action is for the board to award the bid to AR Chesson Construction and authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract contingent upon town attorney review.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, can I get a motion to approve the bid as presented and to authorize the manager to enter the contract?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I just, I want to comment before we vote. We were able to get this project for less than we had originally budgeted.
I believe the original budget was about a half a million dollars more than what the bids came in at.
And the other thing I do want to observe is that this contractor is the same contractor who successfully built the Public Works complex, which went smoothly. So, have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So at this time, Mr. Mayor, you want to open the public hearing to consider the financing for this project?
Um, yes.
All right. Well, we'll do so, and we'll begin the public hearing by receiving the staff's analysis and overview of this, presented by Amy Miller, the Deputy Town Manager and Finance Officer.
Good morning. So, yes, so now we have to pay for this, and this financing does need to be approved by the LGC. And part of the requirements to get approval from the LGC is to hold a public hearing on the financing. And so David had talked about the actual contract itself, but there are some other items that we need to take into consideration, such as a contingency, furniture, fixtures, equipment, you know, the security, networking, landscaping, things like that. So, the recommendation is to finance $2.7 million. We did an RFP for financing. We received three bids. The lowest one was First National Bank at 4.17% for 10 years, but we're going to close, the LGC meeting is August 5th on a Tuesday, and then we plan to close that week and make our first payment a couple weeks after that, just to give them a chance to close on the loan. We will have a deed of trust on this property, the 5401 South Croatan Highway, and the interest rate was 4.17%. That was the lowest interest rate we received, including all the fees of the three proposals. So, that is our recommendation. And we do have some other actions that are required by the LGC beyond the public hearing, and it's to adopt a few resolutions. I do have a budget amendment that has no impact on the budget. The real impact is the debt payment that was already included in the adopted budget. And I did put a reimbursement resolution in there, just in case we had started the project ahead of closing, you know, again, closing on the financing, which is going to be hopefully that first week in August shortly after the LGC meeting. So, just wanted to cover ourselves. So, that's what we're asking today, and our recommendation again is to accept the proposal from First National Bank. It is tax-exempt and bank-qualified, meaning this calendar year, we will be borrowing less than $10 million. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Miller?
Pretty straightforward.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Miller?
Not that I can think of.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed installment financing contract? Does the board wish to receive any other information on this before you deliberate on the installment financing contract and take actions on the various other components of this? All right. If not, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing on this matter, and the board may consider the installment financing contract for this construction of the Phase 1 Town Hall Campus Master Plan.
All right. So, we will start with the resolution approving the financing terms, which Amy outlined for us, and that was not to exceed $2.7 million.
Yes, but I think we've kind of settled on 2.7 is what we're going to finance, based on some of the calculations that David came up with.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Then a motion would be in order?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for financing terms. Any further discussion?
Is this just terms, or is this the approval for First National Bank?
It's the approval for First National Bank with the interest rate. So, yes, sir, it would be...
We add First National Bank to the motion?
Yes.
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 Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you. Which next?
Authorizing, the filing of an application, that resolution just is for the, it's an LGC requirement, and it basically outlines why we're doing the project and the necessity of the type of financing we're doing. And so that is what that resolution states.
Okay. In that case, a motion approving the resolution authorizing the filing would be in order.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you. Amy, and the reimbursement resolution would be next. So, a motion to approve the reimbursement resolution would be in order?
So moved on the reimbursement resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you. And the last thing, I believe, would be the budget amendment. So, a motion would be in order to approve the associated budget amendment that Amy described.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And is there another one?
Well, I'm next also.
Oh, you're just, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Very good. We'll then continue, please. John, do we close that public hearing and open another?
We already concluded that one. We're going to reopen the, we're going to, at this time, Mr. Mayor, we will open the public hearing to consider the North Carolina Public Beach and Coastal Water Access Grant application to fund the replacement of the Hargrove Street Bath House.
Thank you.
And we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis by the Deputy Town Manager and Finance Officer, Amy Miller.
Yes, and I definitely don't want to steal the thunder from Joe Costello, because he's the one that, he's not here today, but he is the one that actually did the bulk of that grant, and I know David Ryan helped him also. So, thank you to him. This grant is for, like John said, the Coastal Waterfront Access Grant. It's due at the end of the month, and part of the requirement of being asked to submit a final proposal is to have a public hearing. And so, in the packet, we've outlined, you know, some of, we included the grant application that Joe initially submitted that we are going to tweak, and we have some refinement to do on that. But it is, we are going to be asking them for $400,000 for the replacement of the Hargrove Bath House. We are going to ask the Tourism Board for a grant, and then we'll have some skin in the game also with some local funding. And I know this is part of the CIP, and we included this when we adopted the CIP last month. The design, I think, was in the CIP for next fiscal year, '27, and then this will be for '28. So, that timeline fits within the parameters of this grant application. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, thank you to Joe.
Any questions for Ms. Miller? All right. Thank you. Anything else, Amy?
I don't think so.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposal, this grant application? Does the board need to receive any other information before you begin deliberations? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing, and the board may begin deliberations on the proposed grant application to fund the replacement of the Hargrove Street Water Bath House, Waterfront Bath House.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, folks?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the grant application.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully, the legislature will finish up that informal bidding threshold, and we'll be able to do this under the informal guidelines, but that remains to be seen. But it would be nice if we could. All right. Very good. That brings us to reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Director.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't have too terribly much for you this morning. The Planning Board, we didn't have anything on our agenda, so we actually did not meet in the month of June. We will be meeting in July. We have one text amendment to look at, and that is being made by TWs, and they are looking to amend the language that requires a 20-foot separation between buildings on the same property. They're looking to lower that 20-foot separation to 10 feet. So, that will be going to the Planning Board, and we'll be continuing our conversation on the Commercial Outdoor Recreation Overlay District as well. We did not have any Board of Adjustment meetings in June. As far as the Septic Health Advisory Committee goes, our next meeting is coming up at the end of July, on July 30th. Staff, we're just moving forward with creating the scope for the DWI, No Interest Loan, working on getting some type of prequalification requirements together for Davis Bacon and American Steel requirements. I want to thank Amy Miller. She has gotten this on the LGC meeting agenda for August 5th for their approval, which is going to be required. The Estre and Shoreline Management Plan, that's moving forward. We have the Coastal Hydrodynamic Modeling and Design that's being conducted this month. Once we receive that, we'll get the Basis of Design Report, and that should be done early August, and we should have our community outreach in late August, early September. And that is a little bump from when we thought it would be, by about a month. Sand relocation and dune management, we're finished with that for this season. At the end of the day, we awarded 94 dune grants for $213,000. We just heard about the Hargrove Street KMA Access and then Doughty Park Events. We're just in full swing with everything. It's been great so far. We've had a lot of attendance at Air Fitness. Our last concert went well. We do have a concert tonight. It's going to be the band Peer Pressure, but I know weather might play a factor in that, so just keep an eye on that. Fitness Fridays are going great, Family Fun Times, Kids Move More, and Wagon Wednesdays at the Dog Park. They've all been very successful.
Okay. Very good.
Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
I have a question. It's perhaps a little bit unrelated, and I think probably either you, David, or Andy can answer. What's our progress on Wellmont Park? Where are we with that project right now?
I'll defer to the town manager.
Well, Nancy actually has the most information.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I don't know if you would mind coming up and just saying a few words about where things stand. I will say Nancy has sort of taken the role of being the general contractor on this project for the town.
Oh, boy.
And she's wading through a lot of things. She's doing a great job, but this was sort of a learning experience for us, and so, you know, we're taking our time with it. And there's some specialized things that go along with this, like, for instance, the floodproofing of the building. This building is being floodproofed, and that's sort of a unique thing that not a lot of projects, you know, conduct. So, we're having to deal with that as well and lead times on getting some of that equipment, but Nancy.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's moving right along. We're having the, the electrician has to, we're doing the drywall, the trim and the paint, then the electrician will come in. They will have an inspection, and then the floodproofing is what is going to take a while, because they have to make it custom. So, I think they're planning 10 to 14 weeks on that.
Wow. Okay.
And that's all I have to say.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just hadn't heard about that in a while. Just wanted to know we were moving along on it.
It'll be essentially done, and I think we'll be waiting on that floodproofing. And so, you know, and then part of that is making sure that we get the proper certifications for the floodproofing from the engineer.
Yep.
So, but, you know, when you drive by, you know, you see what looks to be from the road, an almost complete structure. And so, I'm sure at some point, people will want to start using it.
Sure. Yes.
But, yeah, the, it's been a good project. You know, the septic system's in. I don't know, have they done the concrete? They haven't finished all the concrete.
They're doing that next week.
Okay. And so, yeah, once they do the final concrete work, you know, it will really look finished, and that's when people will really want to start going up in there and looking at it. I know Stephen and Nancy ordered some equipment for the building, some picnic tables, and I think they already have those in, and so we're just waiting at this point.
Good. Good. I just want the public to understand that, you know, because of the bidding conditions and the thresholds, it was hard to get contractors, local contractors, to build small projects like this. So, this is the town's first foray into doing it itself. And so, that's the kind of learning. So, this is the town's first foray into doing it itself, and so, that's the kind of learning exercise that this has been, and, and, you know, it's a, kind, construction is a learning experience for that, that's for sure. So, thank you, Nancy, for stepping into that role and taking that on. Appreciate that. Thank you. That brings us to new business, and that would be, start with committee reports, and I'll start. Mr. Sanders, anything?
Can I ask Kelly one question?
Yes, sir, absolutely, of course. Yep, sorry.
No, it's all right. Yes, sir.
Kelly, you mentioned the applications for the sand removal and all that. So, we're working on a two-year cycle, right? Is it two years that they can reapply?
Three.
Every two years? Every three years? So, how do we fall in that? Do you expect more next year or less next year, based on the timeframe of
We do expect more next year. This year was probably the lowest that we've had, and we're going to see the people who took advantage that first year come back for their next cycle this coming year. So, I anticipate that it's going to be
So, are we budgeted correctly for that?
I think so. Yes, we didn't use what we had budgeted this year, but I think that number's still appropriate.
And have we actua, do we have an actual count of how many oceanfront properties have taken advantage of this?
We do, but I don't know that number.
Okay, I don't need to answer. I just wanted to make sure we knew, you know, is there 2% or 10% left that hasn't taken advantage of it, or, you know, where do we fall into that? And that's just going to help with budgeting moving forward.
Yeah, it's a great question. We can actually, we'll put that together, because I think it is valuable to know what we're looking at coming
So, that's going to be presented in August, right?
Yes.
And so, maybe we could do a little map or something.
That would be good.
It'd just be nice to know. Tabulation of the number of properties and permits and, and the applications we've done, just since we've completed that three-year cycle. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports, can Mr. Sanders, anything?
Nothing new this month, thank you.
Great. Can Mr. Sears?
From the Tourism Board, it was budget month last month, and then they are still working on the stoplight at Soundside Event Site with the help of the Chief, Perry Hill. And then the Housing Task Force voted, I guess it was last week or the week before, to move forward as a nonprofit, so they're getting that structure, and they have identified properties that they can actually build some, some housing on. So, it's been a lot of work with a lot of groups, but they're coming around with some good information.
Very good. Thank you.
The Government Education Access Channel did have our meeting last week. We extended a LPDVI grant. We're still talking about doing the Film Festival idea, and we're also still looking for some extra help for Chad. But I did want to talk about Roberta's. We have our film that we talked about the last meeting, but just an extra reminder that that's July 15th at 7:00, and you can RSVP online, so make sure you get in and do that.
I'll be there. Thank you. That's, that's good. I'm excited about that. I hope a lot of people
Yeah, there's a lot of people there.
Do RSVP, and a lot of folks show up. It's going to be pretty cool. All right, that brings us to consideration of an appointment to a board or committee, and we have an opening on arts and culture that we would like to fill today, and so, a motion would be in order. If no one has one in mind, I would nominate Genevieve Stewart to fill that position.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney. Mr. Whitey?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to present today.
Okay, very, very good, thank you. Items from, to and from the town manager. Andy?
I have nothing else today, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Board of Commissioners' agenda, I'll start or the other, and Commissioner Lambert, anything else today?
Nothing, but I did want to say happy 4th of July to all of our staff, especially the staff that isn't off on the 4th of July, to make sure everyone else has a happy and safe the 4th.
Yes, I'd be there.
Yeah, and our Public Works. Thank you guys very much.
First responders, Stefan.
Yeah.
Mr. Sears?
I would echo what Commissioner Lambert said.
We may have a bigger crowd this year. Hyde County's already canceled their Oak Co fireworks.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Preemptively, I guess, because of suspicions about the weather, so we may, we may see some of those folks up here.
Yeah, it'll be a busy week, for sure, a busy week.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you, and a happy 4th as well.
Okay, very good, thank you. Now, that brings us to the mayor's agenda. The only thing I have is to let you know that I will be in DC next week. You know that the Boeum is in the process of creating a new offshore oil leasing plan. The president had asked that all areas be considered, including those that had previously been given protective status, including, you know, underwater sanctuaries and everything else, and so, there was a comment period that closed at the end, about the middle of last month, so now, we're going to start some, some legislative action, and so, in the company of some folks from Oceana and some other folks from all over the country who were flying in, we're going to make the rounds of the, of Congress next week, and so I'll be glad to bring you a report on that. Is, before we go to closed sessions, is there other business to come before the board? Hearing none, then I move that we, the board, go into closed session for the purpose of considering closed session minutes and their disposition pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1, and to consider a personnel matter pursuant to 143-318.11A6. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. The board will be in closed session. The board has returned to open session.